Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Howard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we please remain standing for a moment of reflection of the things that are going on in the world today and in our community? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Burton.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Here.
Dr. Henderson.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Mr. Levenstein.
Here.
Ms. Maida.
Here.
Ms. Mineo.
Here.
Mr. Stridiron.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
So, Board members, tonight, we're doing something a little bit different. We're having the public speaking first. We're going to roll both non-agenda and agenda items together, okay? Is that all right with everybody? Okay, thank you. So, we're now at the section of the Agenda for Public Discussion and Comments on Agenda Items. Please refer to the Regulations Regarding Discussion and Comments. Anybody... Oh, everybody's going to get five minutes, and the timer will be up there, so please, you know, help me, help you, to let the next person talk, because we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people signed up to speak, okay? And we're going to have a total time of up to an hour, up to an hour, okay? Now, I'm going to suggest that everybody, if you have something to say, please be careful and try not to use anybody's name, because that's a human resources thing, so just be, you know, be respectful and be polite and help us with that. And I would thank you in advance for helping us with that. So, the first person that's up is Ms. Courtney Allen.
Thank you. Good to be seen. During the last meeting, I stood up, and I had a concern in regards to the lack of communication that the school board gave the parents in the community on the issue of, I believe it was April 25th, the issue where black children were being targeted. And there was no update then, and technically, there still hasn't been, there was somewhat of an update, thanks, Mr. Forgett, in the email that was sent out yesterday. But my whole thing is, I saw what happened with the teacher and the braid and everything. My thing is to this board, things of that nature may not happen if this district took black lives and made them seem like they mattered. Now, when there's no communication, or a lack of communication, or a lack of protection or safety, when the black children in this community don't feel that they're safe, or that the school district is not stepping in and doing anything, that leads to teachers or school staff feeling that, hey, I can say anything I want about the black children or any colored kids, and nothing's going to happen. You know why? Because there's no follow-through. That's a problem. It all correlates, it all leads to the same road. This district has an issue when it comes to children who look like myself, and that's definitely an issue. There's a group of young students who had a meeting not too long ago, and they said, and this wasn't, I wasn't even at this meeting, I was told this, they said to the people who formed the meeting, I'm sorry, guys, they said to the people who formed the meeting that when that whole incident happened, that they didn't feel safe. I was told that this district told everyone to go about the day like nothing ever happened. I'm not sure about yesterday's occurrences, and if we, you know, we did the same thing as nothing ever happened, but this is an issue. I stand here as a parent, I stand here as a community member, and I also stand here for the Newburgh Parent Alliance. We're a group of parents who see a need, and a community who sees a need where there's a gap between communication and issues within this school district. We're tired. I shouldn't have to come here two meetings in a row, because I'm tired of hearing things that are going on within this district that don't protect people who look like myself, my child, or other children. We should all feel protected. What are we doing as far as safety is concerned? That's an issue. I need that to be addressed. I met with some people on the board, but hey, again, what's being done? What's being, what's being, what's the thing here? What's going on? Do I feel safe with sending my daughter to school? Should I feel safe? I should feel safe with sending my daughter to school, but how can I feel safe when there are threats being made upon her, and when there are teachers who don't look like her, who don't understand her, and don't care about her, making crazy comments about, again, kids who look like her? My daughter wears extensions, and I know this may seem like it's all over the place, but like I said, all correlates, does it not? Does it not?
It does.
So, as I said before, something needs to be done. We, as a community, are tired, we're fed up, we put you in these positions, now do what you need to do. Thank you.
First of all, the way we was treated this afternoon, even coming into this building. Come on, come on, you've got to do better. I expect better. You all supposed to be professional people, so treat us with the same respect.
That's right.
With the same respect, man. And to tell me that all visitors must go through the metal detector, okay, that's fine, then everybody go through it. Not just who you choose to go through. This is our, this is our school. We elected you guys to represent us, right? So, do your job, man. Like, I go to work every day, and my supervisor expect me to do my job, and I do it the best I can. And that's all that I expect from you guys. It's, you know, I'm so upset. I need to center myself, because this is crazy, man. This is crazy. This is crazy. For something to happen in my, in our community, and nobody reaches out to us as a whole, the Newburgh Teachers, the Newburgh Parents Alliance that I'm a member of, the NAACP that most of you know that I'm the president of, if not you will, nobody. One board member reached out to me.
How many?
One. And Bishop Woody reached out to me, okay? So, because it's not that, you know, I'm this magic guy that is going to resolve things, but at least have the decency and the respect of our community to reach out to us, to let us know that you hearing us, you taking us serious. We shouldn't have to wait. And that little thing you put up on your website, that was a joke. It was a straight-up joke to the community. You didn't say nothing that made us feel better about being black and coming and sending our black kids to the school, because let's focus on that. Let's not talk about that first, because these are, these kids that's being targeted, that I feel is being targeted, is black. So, I'm going to speak about the black community, and I will speak about my Latino community as well, if they be in target. But it seems like the black kids is being targeted, from a police being called on a seven-year-old to someone think it's funny, and that it's okay to put something like that on Facebook, and then to tag the school district. So, what is going on in the district that we don't know about, that someone feels that it's okay to do that? That's what I want to know, because they have to feel like everything is Gucci with them, as the young folks would say. Because no other, they wouldn't have did that if they not have feel that the hammer of the board and the district was coming down on them. They wouldn't be doing that. So, we need to look at the culture that is going on in the school district, among the staff, when it comes to these young black kids. Because we got to do better, man. We got to do better. You know, I don't want to come up here again and have to have the same talk. You know, it's, we went through some of your rules and regulations, your code of conduct, and there's a group on there called SAVE, the SAVE Committee. Who's on that committee? We see the names of, you know, the board members. How many parents on that committee? How many kids, young folks, I shouldn't say kids, because I don't like to call them kids. How many young folks is on that committee? Because they the one that need to express to us what they are feeling, so we can get to know what's going on, what's really going on, right? If they is on the board, you know, how many parents, how many children, how many security? Because as we reading this, this is what is all said supposed to be on this committee. So, who's really on this committee? And who appoints the people on the committee?
Mr. Harvey, that's five minutes.
Do you have to sign up to speak? So, can I sign up now?
Me too. Well, if you, if people sign up, I'll call you.
No, I want to sign up now. I want to speak, I want to sign.
You ain't going to take us to sign in. Okay, so, can you come up and sign, because I don't want to come in front of the president of the community. So, the next person I have is Ms. Ashanti George.
I'm here because I'm tired, and I think I speak for the rest of the brown community of Newburgh. I'm tired of the template apologies, tired of the, we don't condone, we don't condone this behavior, but no repercussions are felt, no accountability is held. I'm tired of the textbook responses, the broken promises, the empty promises. We don't want that anymore. We're not here for that anymore. Friday, June 10th, a woman whom some of you may title a teacher, I won't post a racial vile picture of one of her students' braid extensions that had been pulled out in alleged fight online to Facebook. Not only did she post it to Facebook for her friends to see, she tagged Newburgh Free Academy in the picture. So childish, so juvenile, that's what children do, and yet, this is who our children are around, okay? Why did she do this is not a question. She did it because she's comfortable with stuff like that. She did it because she knew she wouldn't feel no heat behind it, and this is normal for her. She just didn't think she'll get the attention she got today. She called the braid biohazardous. Biohazardous is a noun, a risk to human health or the environment, so she felt this braid was compromising her health. The braid that was once attached to her student's head. So, is the student biohazardous too? Not a question. Dreadlockymatic Africaness. They get very large.
Africaness.
Africaness.
Yeah, that's what it was.
They get very large. That was a comment from one of her friends describing the child's braid. FYI, that snake does not exist. At any point, she could have said, hey, we're going too far, or even deleted the post in general, and it would have never been anything, but she kept indulging in it, and she kept bullying, and yes, I use the word bullying, because that's what that is. Is that hair another friend of hers asked? Yes, with the disgusted emoji. So, she knew what it was. So, why ask, help her find out what kind of snake it is, when you knew it was hair? She could have easily picked up a glove, threw it in the trash, called a janitor, because it's biohazardous to remove it. But no, she went to Facebook with it, where the child could see, because she added NFA. What about their feelings? Not a question. You're so funny, read another. So, now, here we are, and what do we get? An email saying it's being looked into, that you guys don't tolerate this type of behavior, well, today, prove it to us. Make an example. We don't want to hear she's retiring. What does that do for us? She'll still get our tax dollars as she sits home. I, and I feel, along with the rest of the Newburgh people, would like her pension taken away, touch something. I won't stop here. I will continue to reach out to other outlets, I will continue to sit with anchors, I will make this go viral. I do have a following, I'm young, but I'm in the field fighting for, I have a daughter. She's not that age, but she will be, so I'm here for her, and I'm here for every other African girl who might wear a braid and it slip out. Today, you guys have a chance to make a change, but I'm here to let you know I'm going to be a part of that change, whether you guys like it or not. Thank you.
That's virtual. Okay, she's not here, so we'll come back, okay? Ms. Marcia Espinoza Oliva.
Hello. My name is Shadi Burks. My aunt is Francella Palmer. She called me to speak on her behalf on tonight. I am here concerning an issue with her seven-year-old son that we addressed at the last board meeting. I am here because she has still not received a call concerning that issue, and concerning what is going to be done with the teachers and the principal that were involved in that issue. Why are they still working at the school? Why did they choose to go over the social worker's head, who said that the environment was fine? Why was police sent to her house, and why was her door busted in on for a seven-year-old that drew a picture? In the District-Wide School Safety Plan 2021 through 2022, it states that the law enforcement should be notified if necessary when there is an implied threat. What is considered an implied threat? This is a vague statement that is left to an individual's interpretation, which leads to the lack of district-wide implementation. Then, our black and brown students get penalized by non-culturally responsive adults making judgmental calls. We need a clear definition of what an implement, of what an implied threat is, with clear examples of this, so parents are informed, so we can let our children know what is appropriate in school, and what they will be held accountable for. The district needs to be mindful of the language that is used when working with students of color. And as a district that claims to be restorative, we cannot use terms that criminalize black and brown students. The code of conduct is a district-wide policy, yet every school in the district operates differently. We need a policy implementation to be consistent around the board. That is Ms. Francella's concern. I'm also here concerning the Facebook post that was made, and the teachers, and the principal of Heretics, the former principal of Heretics, Mr. Rady, which is a school that my nephew goes to. So, if he's commenting racial slurs on a picture that was posted by a teacher that works at NFA during her school hours, which children are told to use, not to use their phone during school hours, but a teacher can make a post during school hours while she's working concerning an African-American students here, I'm standing up here and braced. What does that say about me? What does that say about my brown son sitting there, who wants dreadlocks, and he wants one half to be yellow and one half to be red? What is that saying about him? Is he going to be judged by that? Are teachers going to discriminate him because of that? I can tell by looking at some of the faces up here that are not black and brown, that what I am saying is going in and one ear and out the other. But it is okay, because as the Bible says, those who are last will soon become first. So, I am confident in the God that I serve, and the faith that I work, that we will get these codes of compliance done and dealt with fairly for our students, so they can have a fair chance at educating. It is sad that we send our kids to a school district where it is already stating in its books, and there are facts, I'm reading one now, where these school systems are already set up for black and brown children to fail. It is an unfair district, where we already have 90% of the black households without fathers, because they are in homes where the fathers have already been taken away. This is back to slavery, when the fathers were taken away from their homes, and now they're taken away for little petty crimes in the community, and then they're sent back out, and they can't get a job, so they do another crime to protect, to feed for their family, and now there's no black father, or no father figure in a household to instruct these rules. Where do we make a change at for our children? We are paying y'all tax dollars, and we, some of these parents are busting their behinds, working two or three jobs as single moms, as single dads, and our children are not getting treated fairly. That is my question. When do we start to protect our children? I know it can be done, because I'm a living example for my son, it has been done. He has finally got his IEP meeting, which I applied for in February, he just got it in June, but thank God that he walked out of there with all of the services that he will need to be able to have an academically successful school year next year. So, can we make another example of how there can be a good change in this school system? Thank you.
Are either of the virtual people on? Okay, okay. Ms. Gretchen Quill.
I stand before you as a parent of a student in the Newburgh in Large City School District, specifically Newburgh Free Academy, main campus. I am disheartened by what is going on in our community. My question is, is this 2022 or 1942? We got to get it better, people. We are doing something wrong here, where our educators are victimizing our children. She was already victimized. When her hair was ripped out of her head, that won't grow back. It won't grow back. For women, we know that we, our beauty, our hair, our makeup is what we thrive off of. It ain't for the men, it's for us, to look in the mirror and say, I look beautiful today. I can face today. I can face today. What do we give that child? That child will get be my baby. That child will get be your baby. Your baby too, if you had a black man, okay? Come on, what do we do? We just give her her pension and let her skedaddle on her happy way? I'm disheartened. I'm disheartened. I'm disheartened that that seven-year-old baby was victimized, and nobody knew about it. Nobody knew about it. The art teacher, what's up with your art teachers? Okay, we need to do a better screening, people. These art teachers are out of control. They're out of control. Who's in the fashion design classes? But are babies that are of color that want to be the next Versace, okay? The next culture couture? This is what they strive for, if they ain't on the basketball field and trying to get it done with the engineering. We got some beautiful minds. That child's heart, her soul, her spirit was destroyed, when she found out that a teacher she looked up to, that helped her, was supposed to help her, that did not help her. They victimized her. She was victimized when she got into the fight and had her hair with her. She was humiliated when that happens. Not once, but twice, people, twice. And I don't even want to get on to Threat in May, because I had a whole lot of time to be waiting for the robo-calls, okay? Because I had my son in the hospital who had a stroke, but then I was waiting for calls on the threat, and I thank God that he was in Westchester Medical, and I didn't have to send my boy, my baby, to that hellhole up there, because you're not protecting him. Thank God, he walks around with confidence. He looks like LeBron James. They don't mess with him, because he's suave. He don't get in any trouble, he may not go to class and he hang out in the nurse's office, but that's another story I'm dealing with, okay? But he's there. He's there to be educated. His mommy, see his mama going for, not only her masters, he watched me go through my associates, my bachelors, my masters, now my FNP. What are y'all saying to this mind I'm trying to cultivate? What are you saying to him that it's okay for his teachers to make fun of him? It's okay. It's all right. No, it's not. It's not, it's not. I hold dual citizenship in this community. I'm from Beacon, the light, the truth. They got issues over there, won't even get into it, because they got issues with their board, and there are no educators over there looking like the school district, okay? But I'm vested in this district. I'm vested. We need safety for our children of color. We need safety for all children. I love up on each and every child that I see, every take, every time I'm somewhere. A baby doesn't look at me and smile, it does not smile, and I coochie-coo them. I don't care where I'm at. I could be at Family Dollar, which is one of my little favorite little spots, okay? And I say coochie-coo to the babies. We need, and we have a lot of diversity, but the ones that we got, that you make, you make the employees take those little daisies and all that stuff, who's it for? Because it sure ain't for the people of color. We already know how to be black and culturally sensitive, because we haven't been, okay? All right? We are not our grandparents. I know I'm not my grandmama, because she might not be standing up here, she'd be in church somewhere, because she went Monday through Sunday. But I know who I am. I'm a proud black woman. Any woman in here that has ever worn braids, please stand up, if you have braids, or ever worn braids. Please stand up. Some of y'all know y'all went to Jamaica and got braids too. Stand up. Stand up, because you go right there and get your braids, okay? Imagine your hair being ripped out, ripped out, from your scalp with that braid, that heavy braid in your hair. What you going to do? Go home and cry to your mama, and you hope she got some ointment, some salve, like my grandma taught me how to make, to bring that hair follicle back? But if not, it's gone forever, and that baby got to try to put some more fake hair on her head, to cover up the bald spot, if the child receive any medical attention.
Ms. Quill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody, no, okay. Amari Shakur, please.
Councilman Shakur. So, first of all, I know y'all talked about the problem, yeah, I'm the councilman. I know y'all talked the problem, but I'm here about solutions, because I looked at the picture of the seven-year-old kid, and I seen this stuff on Facebook. So, both of them were basically illegal acts, so I want to make sure that these teachers, he's a fired, reprimanded, whatever the situation is. That's what we come down here for, because anybody that looked at that picture and seen that picture, first of all, let's say, if this was a white kid, we wouldn't be here. First of all, let's say that. If this was a white child, we wouldn't even be here for these problems. So, the second incident also was online. So, from what I'm hearing from other officials and everything, that is against school policy, when you're documenting or whatever you're doing on Facebook during school time. So, why isn't this teacher already being reprimanded or fired already for going against school policy? Why do we have to have a meeting to make sure that this is done? And I'm telling the community, if this is not done, your next step should be to shut these people down, because they're not doing their job, because there's no argument here. The argument, once this, once this psychologist made sure that this incident was whatever, was all right or whatever, and this teacher went over their head, that was the problem, because now you got the city of Newburgh in it, because you got our police department involved in it. And now, somebody's facing, losing their job from our city because of what happened, because this officer went in and didn't know what his policy was and what your policy was, and he went to somebody's house, and he did something that, from witnesses I'm hearing is illegal. My police chief and my police commissioner keep coming, keep asking me to come down and see the tape, but I don't want to see nothing, because I already know the power, I already know what happened. I already know what happened. But I'm tired of looking at the problems, I want to look at solutions. Are these teachers going to be reprimanded and fired? Because everything that was on that Facebook, that teacher should be fired. and any teacher that answered that Facebook should be reprimanded and made to know that this is not a joke. See, because anybody that thinks our children is a joke, they in the wrong, they in the wrong place in the first place to be working if they think our kids is a joke. And to the parents, to the parents, we need to be here every meeting for our children. Every meeting. Because if y'all think this is the first time these incidents have happened, let me let you know. I have had plenty of people come up to me with incidents that have happened in our school. But like I said, I've been waiting for the parents to come out. Because these are our children. These are our problems. And if we don't stop it right now, then four or five more other parents are going to be coming here next month and the next month. We gotta stop this. So we just asking you to do your job. It's, this is straight up for it. And could you answer the community tonight? Was that against school policy what that teacher did? Was that against school policy? Can anybody answer that? Was that against school policy? Because if it was, why are we having a meeting even talking about? Because your show did your job, she went against school policy, she should have been reprimanded or fired already. And as a Newburgh official, I will make sure that we come, we will make an official condemnation of this whole, this whole, because these are our students. And these are our residents that are being affected. Newburgh is 80% black and Hispanic. But the teachers that they go in front of, I'm hearing is like about 15% black or Hispanic? I don't know the numbers. I'll get them, I can get them tomorrow. But I know those numbers don't reflect our children. And they're dealing with people every day that don't know how to deal with children of black and brown color. Our children come to school with different issues than your children. Our children, our children come to school sometime, some of them might be hungry. Some of them might, um, they might have a lot of problems in their home right now. So they're coming in with a lot of problems that aren't even looked at. And they, they, they're held to a different standard that they have to learn than your children, who have breakfast at night, who has a good family he comes from, who has a lot of things. So you have to understand that a lot of our children do not have the same, um, what can I say? The same resources your children have. And so we have to understand that. So we need children, and we need teachers that understand that. We need teachers that know how to talk to our children, know how to interact with our children, and not make fun of our children. And not demonize our children. Because that young man, the seven-year-old, was demonized. I seen that picture. There's no way y'all can make me think that was a gun, any fucking, excuse my language, anything except what it meant. It was a pitcher. And like I said, if that was a white child, we wouldn't have never been here.
Mr. Shakur?
So why do we have to come here for our children?
Mr. Shakur, thank you.
Okay, my time is up. But like I said, if they don't do what they have to do for the teachers, let's shut these, let's shut these meetings down.
Thank you, Mr. Shakur. Still not, okay. Ms. Boyd?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here again. You guys know who I am. Good evening, everyone. You guys know who I am. I've been here before, and I stated I will keep coming until we get this right. The reason why, I'm so glad to see all the parents and all stakeholders here tonight. Give yourselves a hand. But it shouldn't take incidents for them to have to come out. There shouldn't be any incidents. I had a parent come up to me, and I'm coming here as a community-driven stakeholder, also the Police Review Board, also on many other boards, and a member of the NAACP, and I'm part of the Parent Alliance. I had a parent come up to me last week, and because she's undocumented, she doesn't want to be here. That is such the fear that they're dealing with. Her daughter goes to Horizon. Her daughter was sent to the nurse's office, because one day she went home, and there's not that many white people, white kids in our schools. The majority is made up of Latino and Black. So she's in a classroom, and the girls wear their hair down. So she said to her mom, she wants to wear her hair down one day too. Her mother said, one day, she said, "Okay." Normally, she doesn't. She wears it in a ponytail or in a bun. She wore her hair down, and the teacher sent her to the nurse's office. Nurse checking her hair for lice. The one day she wears her hair down, do you check the other kids? Why you did it to her, because she wore her hair down that one day? Went home, in her bookbag was no letter to state, "We checked your daughter. We touched your daughter." Not a phone call was given to the mother while she was at work. These are the things that our kids are facing every day when they go to school. This is elementary. I don't even want to talk about the high schools. The high schools, the kids are supposed to be there safe. I watched a video with a brawl throwing down. And there was video, and no one broke up the fight. What's security? Why are we paying 80-something thousand to sheriffs to even be in our schools? They don't even need to be there. Teachers. We need teachers that look like us, that understand us, that know us. Do you know what that would do for a child to see a teacher of their own image? Meanwhile, we got teachers that are mocking, cyberbullying, grown adults that's supposed to have their degrees. And they're doing this to our children? How many of you go home at night and laugh and mock us at your dinner table? But if that was done to your child, what would happen? How would you feel? It's not a nice feeling. And I know the arms, I'm looking at the body language, and I read the body language. And you just want this night to be over and done. This is, you're gonna need a bigger place to have meetings. Because it's not gonna get smaller, it's gonna get bigger. And if you don't want to sit on this board, excuse yourself. If you're not gonna be useful and do something about it. And I want all the parents to start going out to these board elections. I went to the last one, and I voted. We need, just like we're here tonight, we need to start voting. We need to start being at these board elections and remove people. If they're not gonna do their jobs, remove them. I don't know all the numbers, but I do know that my school taxes are about 52%, and the city gets 47%. I'm not quite accurate, but you guys get the majority. And I don't have a kid in school. And I'm sitting here fighting for others, because I may have grandkids one day. And if I have to send them to the school, it's not gonna be like this. And my heart goes out to the parents that are here right now that's going through that, because you label them at a very early age. So when there's an incident that occurs when they get older, now they have a track record, where you go back to elementary and say, "Well, this child was a problem." That's disgusting.
Ms. Boyd, it's time, thank you. Okay. Would anybody else like to speak? We have a moment or two left. We have some time left.
I have an IEP, it's not an IEP on the agenda.
Yes, please. What's your name, please?
Uh, my name is Marjorie Sotomayor.
Thank you.
I would, I have to say, I'm kind of embarrassed, because I have four kids, two graduated from NFA a year ago, and this is my first board meeting. But I'm gonna make sure that it's, that I continue to attend these. And I'm primarily here because I have been reaching out to the school district for months regarding radon testing in Newburgh schools. And I have not gotten a response. When I reached out, I had to email multiple people to even get a reply. So as some of you know, whoever has purchased a house, radon gas is in the ground. And when you purchase a home, it's part of the home buying process. For many of us, I came from the city, from the Bronx 15 years ago. I never even heard of radon. It was a checklist item when I purchased my house. I kind of forgot about it for the last few years. And I'm sorry if I get a little emotional, but what I'm hearing here, you know, the last few minutes that I've walked in, kind of like, you know, it's kind of, took my mind off the radar, because I know that there are a lot of topics that the school district has to deal with, and a lot of very important topics. And, um, for me, the school district needs to test for radon. And, um, over the last few years, there has been, um, a bill to try to make radon testing in Newburgh, in school districts in New York State, um, required or a law. And for the last 10 years, it never gets enough votes to pass. And that's because there's no awareness. I go to the doctor with my sons, and they still ask me about lead poisoning. I mean, there hasn't been lead paint since like the 80s. But no one ever inquires about radon and radon testing. Um, according to the EPA, there are over 21,000 deaths related to radon exposure a year. Meanwhile, Orange County is a level three, I mean, level one zone, which means we are at high risk. And when I inquired about radon testing in the school, the response that I got from the principal at my son's school was that the school district was not required by law to test. And I think that's unacceptable. I don't care if it's required by law. My son is in that school seven, eight hours a day, five days a week. And I want to make sure that when he's in that school, he is breathing air that's not gonna cause him cancer in 10 or 15 years, okay? So it doesn't cost a lot of money to test. And I've seen the budget. I mean, there is money in the budget. There has to be some money allocated, at least to test some classrooms. And if you find that the levels are low, then they're low and no mitigation is required. But if you find that the levels are high and our kids are exposed to it, I think the school district owes us to make sure that our kids, the teachers, the administration, I mean, I was so shocked when the principal said, "We are not required to test." And my response was, "You're sitting in that building eight hours a day, five days a week, most of the year. Aren't you worried about the exposure that you are having to this gas that could potentially cause you cancer in 10, 15 years?" In recent, maybe what, the last two, three weeks, we have heard about a school district in New Jersey where they have found over 94, um, students that have graduated with the same type of rare brain cancer. It's not related to radon. But the point is, now they're doing something about it. After people have died, after they find 94 individuals, students of that school with the same type of cancer. I don't want us to be 10, 15 years from now, Newburgh to find out that we had elevated radon in our schools, and now our kids are the ones suffering, our teachers, our administrative staff. So I'm here today to ask the stu, the, the school district to put money aside, identify a fluke, a few classrooms in every school, test for radon. And if it's, and if it comes out high, please mitigate it, so that we know that when we send our kids to school, yes, we worry about drills, we worry about their security. We worry about bullying, we worry about, you know, social media. But we also need to make sure that they are breathing safe air. Can I say some, one last thing? No?
You can't speak swat twice, I'm sorry, Ms. Allen. I'm sorry. Are they, anybody on? No, okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Can I have your name, please?
Latoya Byas.
Say it again.
Latoya Byas. Last name is B-Y-A-S. I stand here just to speak on a few things. First, I'm a new resident of, um, the Newburgh School District. I came from New York City three years ago, and I decided to make this place my home. This is where I purchased my first home and paid my first round of real school taxes. With that being said, I expected so much more, um, from you guys. Education-wise, disappointed. Professionalism, disappointed. Teachers, disappointed. I've only been here three years, and I've been faced with all of, all of these different things. I'm also standing on behalf of the Parents Alliance. I'm just, like the young lady said before, I'm disheartened. I expected so much more now that I have two young children in New York, New York, I mean, in the Newburgh School District, um, who's four and nine. I'm disappointed not only about the teacher and the posting. I couldn't sleep all night because of it, because, for one, I have young black children who wear braids. After an incident like that, that shouldn't have never happened. The response shouldn't have never been, "She's retiring." That shouldn't have never, what does that have to do with the incident? She's retiring? So what we're gonna do is allow her to retire where my tax money pays her pension. I don't think so. Secondly, I have a daughter who's also in the Special Education Department. I just had an annual CSC meeting today that I've been fighting for since February, who's been diagnosed with dyslexia, two different forms of dyslexia. And the CSC meeting, I'm fighting for her to continue with Wilson reading, and I'm being told that the district can't afford Wilson reading for her to continue with that program? There is a problem. And all I'm asking you guys to do is take everything that we all have come forth with you and just do the right thing. Do the right thing.
Mr. Howard? Mr. Allen?
Hey, how you guys doing? Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna take this off for a second.
Please tell everybody your name.
My name is Corey Allen. I am a, uh, community member and advocate for people. The reason why I, I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, but, um, I'm, I'm thinking about everything, this world. This world for, for me is different from most of you in this room. Um, I see things in a different lens than most of you in this room, most of you on this board. Right now, they talk about how the police departments across America have been inundated with white supremacist gangs. From California share, state, uh, the state people in California, all the way to New York, right here in our backyards. Then I hear, when I see things on television and, and things go down with the police and, and they, you see them, the same dynamic every time. It's not this different dynamic, same dynamic every time. Someone black getting killed or beaten up by police, they always talk about training. And I've been saying for years, as the former, so Terry's the, the chair now, but as the former chair of the Police and Community Relations Review Board, you cannot train away racism. You cannot. I heard that there was, I was told that there was a cultural responsive training that you guys conducted. Cultural responsive training. In the same vein that I talk to the people about the police, there is no training away racism. Because when you look at the reports, you see highest rates of dropouts of black kids all across this country, including Newburgh. You see the most amount of kids in special ed, black boys, including Newburgh. I used to work for you guys. I saw it with my own eyes. So when it comes down to it, right? Because I think about the days of segregation, we had our own black schools. I don't remember my mother and father, or anyone in my family, telling me about special education or disproportionate, uh, suspension rates. You guys have a lot of soul searching to do. There's a lot of money that goes into this budget. You guys have a $300 million budget. $300 million budget. You guys are doing projects here in Newburgh. You say you want the gun violence to stop, put the kids to work. You say you want equity and diversity, but that has not been working for us ever. So my thing is, search your souls. I heard that the teachers at these, these, uh, sensitivity trainings are mocking the trainings themselves. So if they're mocking the trainings, are, do you, it's, it's like, you're doing things over and over again, expecting the different results, insanity. We are all in a state of insanity right now, because this stuff that we're doing does not work. It hasn't worked, ever. So my thing is, the same way, the city of Newburgh, when the kids were shooting, and you guys showed up and said, "We need to figure out a different way, some different ways." It's on you guys. You gotta figure out some different ways, man. You guys have a large, large, large teachers' union. Large teachers' union, very large, with a lot of money behind it. And again, everyone's taken care of. But when it comes down to our kids, we look at the black kids, these disproportionalsities tend to exist despite resources given to the teachers and everything like that. So my thing is, you gotta search your soul now, man. That, I'm, because I'm, every year is something like this. Every year is something like this. If y'all tired of this, I, I'm tired of this. Every year is something going on with some racially, some, some bias. Every year is something going on with some racially, some, some bias comes through when you see it. And it's apparent, you got one side that fights against it, "I don't think it was racist, don't say it was..." goofy, right? Then you got the other side that knows what it is. We're tired. Do something. Straight up. Do something.
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I want to congratulate the parents, the community members who have come out tonight. You need to do this at every meeting, you need to be here at every meeting. Two words I want you to remember is accountability and transparency. And you need to understand, when you hold people accountable by coming to the meetings, expressing your feelings, and letting people know what is bothering you. So as I stand here before you today, I had to make a decision. I was going to read from my spot as a board member, but that's an elected position. One thing that I am and will always be, I'm a black man, born and raised in this city of Newburgh, close to 60 years. I've been through it all. I've been to schools, through the schools, I've been a parent, I've been a taxpayer, I've been a board member. And I must say, the things that have happened recently to the community of color, black people specifically, is very troublesome and bother, bothers me. So what I did, I know what we're doing as a district, I know what we're doing as board members, but I do think and I do know we can do more, and I know that we're trying to do more. So what I ended up doing, I wrote a letter, I wrote a letter to myself as a board member. And I wanted to express the feelings of, of a black man from, from this community. Good evening to all. Recent events that have happened in our school district where the treatment of black students have brought our district under scrutiny. I cannot speak specifically to the events because they are of a personnel nature and are currently being investigated. What I will say is this, we are at a watershed moment in the history of our school district right now. We either address the widespread concerns of the black community, or we continue, as in the past, to soft shoe, soft pedal the concerns as if they do not exist, or act as if we are doing all that we can do to address and understand what the problem is. The former of these two choices is the route that I am hoping we will take. To do this, we really have to open dialogue with a true desire to listen and to act. The events that have recently occurred can be addressed by an all hands-on approach, understanding that this is a call to action. We must figure out how to have discourse around topics that are not comfortable conversations to have, understanding that the current engagement process is not working. The black community needs to feel that we, as a district, truly care about the success of all scholars, which is inclusive of our black boys and girls. They presently do not have that feeling. They feel as if we do not value them as we should, and I know that we do. Intentional and unapologetic attention needs to be put into place, which will allow the community to see the action in our words. Our video needs to start matching our audio. We need to start addressing the disproportionate number of high suspensions of black boys and girls. We need to start talking about the different suspensions for the same offenses for students of different races. We need to address immediately the low numbers of black students in our AP and Honors classes, understanding that these classes...
Mr. Howard? It's five minutes.
I have 30 seconds left.
You're speaking as a public participant, so finish...
I have 30 seconds left.
Do one more sentence.
Okay, I'll go back to my seat and finish from there. I'll finish from my seat.
Go ahead.
Okay. Our video need, our video needs to match our audio. We need to start addressing the disproportionate number of suspensions of black boys and girls, the different suspensions for the same offenses for students of, of the different race. We need to address immediately the low numbers of black students in our AP and Honors courses, understanding that these classes are pathways to college and prepares our scholars for a high-level understanding of the curriculum. Also, it is a must that we find ways to put more teachers and administrators in front of our scholars that looks like them. This is, this is not a complete list, but it will start to show that we hear their cry and understanding where it is coming from. Please, please, please do not miss this opportunity that is in front of us. It will definitely determine where do we go from here. I thank you all. God bless this district.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. We have five, we have five minutes left. Would anybody else like to speak, would you? Yes?
My name is Innocence Powell. Hey, um, so I didn't really plan on saying anything, but the way this is... All right, this is my son, so, hold on one second. Just real quick, um, my mom passed away when I was 14 years old and I wound up coming back to Newburgh and I went to NFA. In the course of like, not even a year, let's say like 10 months, I was, um, sent to the Twilight Program and then kicked out of Twilight and then not really, there was no alternative school other than Twilight at the time. So I wound up going on pins and then being sent up to St. Anne's Institute where I did graduate in 2010. But it's like, there was never like any type of like, um, like no caseworker or guidance counselor, it was like, maybe she needs counseling, like maybe she needs somebody to talk to, like what's going on at home? And then like, at that point, I had just lost my mom, my brother and my sister, like we were separated. And like, all those resources that, you know, are available to kids that aren't black or brown was never allotted to me. And I mean, um, like I'm a mom now, as you can see, and like, life is a lot more different for me now, but I, I think for 10 years, up until I was like 24, I was lost. Like I, um, graduated from St. Anne's, but graduated and started going to jail. And then in 2013, um, I ended up in prison and I came home in 2016. But it's like, my mom dying and then being at NFA and like, not really given the proper resources like to succeed in any way, that set the trajectory of my life, you know? And like, there was many times, hold on, many times, like I was hurting. I mean, I lost my mom, you know? I mean, I tried to take my own life, um, I've hurt others and like, it was just, it, it was wild. And then like me going to prison, like, um, in and out of the box constantly, like I had to get to know myself, I had to start loving me. And I didn't understand how I was going to be able to, but like, you know, all I could have was a Bible. But it's like, that's always been the relief. And it's like, maybe life could have been different and I don't wish to go back. I'm thankful for everything I had to go through, but it's like, I was a student here and like, there was nothing, I mean, no alternative other than suspension, 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 Twilight, kicked out of Twilight. And it's real out here for black folks, like nobody is standing up for us but our own. And then it's like, we literally not heard until a white person uses their voice or face. But it's like, listen to us and like, listen to the kids. And it's another thing, it's scary because like you want to ask them what's going on if something's going on at home, but there's a fear of CPS just immediately getting involved and them being snatched away. And that's not even necessarily it or needed, but, um, God is good. I'm so grateful to see all y'all out here. Like, this is amazing and like, just thank you, but, um, something got to change, more resources, but if y'all got a $300 million budget, there's hella resources. And this lady, this teacher that did what she did, she needs to go. Like, set the precedent for what may happen next or somebody might try to do that it's not okay. Newburgh is predominantly black and brown, bro. But, um, thank you. Thank you so much, y'all.
Excuse me for one minute, Mr. Walker, hang on one second. By the way, our internet has gone down, our, our live feed, so I'm sorry, Mr. Walker, but please speak and then, um, they're going to try to fix it.
I just wanted to say...
They are recording.
If you have your phone, look under something called "The Spoiling of the American Flag." There you will see a picture that was taken in 1970 of a black man in Boston passing a mob and there's this young white guy who's trying to stab him with the pointy edge of a flag because the young man thought he was going to be a teacher. The young man, the black guy, was going to City Hall for an entirely different reason. Now why do I bring that up? The playbook has been the same since before slavery. After slavery, you can find pictures, selfies, and what did the reform of the free slaves have in their hands? Books. They wanted to be seen holding books, reading. That became a danger. And then... Look at 1955 Brown versus the Board of Education. They said it would take 15 years before integration would hit the Northeast. That was the year I started teaching. And I certainly hadn't signed up for that because I went to All Black High School in Cleveland, Ohio, which was the number one high school in the city. Now it's not. Now it's about to be torn down. The playbook is the same. Our reaction, which has always been progressive, which has always come from a place of wanting to be giving, giving as much as, giving as much acceptance as we want it, unselfishly, that's the way it has got to play out. We have got to come with a new method, all of us here, because the kids are not the I was fortunate enough to teach at NFA and I could see, what, I could see the beauty in all those kids and they saw it in each other. I had my seniors write essays, college essays, about how much they loved going to school here. Loved it. One wrote an essay called, "I Found Out Going to NFA That There's A Lot Of Different Ways To Be Beautiful." A lot of different ways. Let's take that concept and use that perhaps as a springboard for the way we're going to work this community together. Everybody is a stakeholder. No more reading books in which every black character is in need of help. No more reading books where if it takes place in a city like Newburgh, some people want them thrown out of the library. Got to think, work together, see this community for the beautiful thing that it is and let's not make anybody make it ugly. Just thank you.
We have to go into executive session at this point. And be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby recesses into executive session for the following purpose: matter made confidential under FERPA, employment history of particular individuals, matters leading to the employment of particular individuals, the review of programs and placements of students with disabilities, collective bargaining under the Taylor Law NTA NASA CSCA, and to obtain advice from legal counsel. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Roll call.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Mada?
Yes.
Ms. Mineo?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
We'll be back in about an hour. I'm sorry, I apologize for the feedback and I'm so, so sorry that we're late. It, it's just, we had a lot to talk about. So first, the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to call on Mr. Shaw. He's going to, um, he has a statement from the board. Sir?
Thank you, Madam President. So earlier today, people came to the microphone to discuss a social media incident that occurred on Friday, wondering what, if any, action the Board of Education is taking. The Board has asked that I explain the legal process that's necessary for action. So an event that happened on Friday involved only tenured pedagogical personnel. Having tenure, there are certain rights that attach to how the Board might proceed to consider discipline against employees. The first thing that occurred through administration was that these employees are not working in the schools. As tenured employees, they have a right to be confronted with union representation by interviewers, in this case through the Human Resources Office. The Human Resources Office then makes a report to the Superintendent of Schools. The Superintendent of Schools, according to Commissioner's regulations, is the only authority that can bring before the Board potential charges for discipline of tenured pedagogical employees. And the Board of Education, in this context, acts like a grand jury. They have to have sufficient evidence to find probable cause to proceed against the individuals. Between Friday and tonight's meeting, there was not the ability to have all of that process take place. That's something that will occur by the time of the Board's meeting a week from now. So the most important thing to know is that employees who are tenured cannot be suspended past a Board meeting unless the Board has voted charges. And the Board hasn't and wouldn't be voting charges unless there was a probable cause basis based upon information presented by the Superintendent, who is the only one who can bring the charges, and typically that's with the assistance of legal counsel in making the probable cause presentation. So hopefully, the due process that is... So hopefully, the due process that is required has to be understood, and that will occur by the next Board meeting a week from now.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. We're going to move on to our interim superintendent, Mr. Forget.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, I have Item 3.1, Resolution to Approve Revised 2021/2022 District Calendar.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Howard? Mr. Levenstein? Ms. Maida? Ms. Mano? Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Madam President, this evening, Item Number 3.2, CLR, our culturally responsive curriculum presentation, will be postponed until next week.
Madam President, Item 3.3 will be a Capitol Project update, provided by the Palumbo Group and Mr. Ramjug and Clark Patterson Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Forget. Keeping in mind how much time we have, it's been, it's been a little while since we've- Thank you. Since we've had an update on the Capitol, so tonight is going to cover quite a bit of information in all of the different categories, starting with a presentation from Clark Patterson Lee of the status of each of the projects, and speaking to the rock removal change order, which was discussed earlier, as well as any other outstanding proposals. So, to no further ado, Ms. Lauren Tarzio from Clark Patterson Lee.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I think it's been some time since we've been in front of you as a full Board, giving an update, so we want to go through really what we've been up to over the last six months or so. Starting with Phase 1, which was the pool, which was completed in the spring of last year. We were very successful with this project, coming in under budget at just under $15 million under budget. Phase 2A, which was completed this spring. This was a site clearing portion of the overall CTE project. This is where we just took down all the trees, we graded the site. We are currently in the closeout phase. The project is complete, but we're gathering the paperwork to close this out. We have a construction budget of about $2.5 million. We awarded contracts of about $1.8 million, and we're anticipating the final contract value to be about $1.9 million, which has us running under budget by $598,000. That anticipated final contract value is inclusive of the change order that you are considering tonight. So a little more on that. Just to give you some background, we showed 3,800 cubic yards of rock removal on our drawings. The reason we chose that number was we had limited information from borings, geotechnical borings, as well as what can be visibly seen on the site. So we had to make our best educated guess as to what quantity of rock would be on the site. We do have a heavily wooded site. It was difficult to get a drill rig in to really understand the underground conditions. So as work progressed, we did discover there was some additional rock. We did present to the Executive Committee and the Board back in January regarding the possibility of additional rock. We just were not entirely sure of what that quantity was. We had to work through the site. We couldn't open the site up in large quantities, meaning we couldn't excavate because of the stormwater permit. So we had to work through that periodically and come back and update. So we anticipated about 1,005 cubic yards. We had a unit price in the contract of $300 per cubic yard of removal of rock. So we did present this to the committee. We got authorization for a not-to-exceed price of $301,500. What we did do with that rock was it is crushed. It's sitting on the site. That rock has a value because it's been tested, and it can be used as a subbase for Phase 2B, which is the building. So that's really savings. It translates into savings for the next phase. Just some additional notes on the site. We also stripped this topsoil off of the site and stockpiled that as well. So that will also be used for the savings from the next phase. This is an indication of what we were finding on the site. This is sort of our working drawing on how we worked through all the rock outcroppings. There are some shaded areas that are darker there. That's what was shown on the contract drawings. And we have a couple of areas outlined in red that were additional areas that were discovered. So this is the document that we used, and we even presented to Exec Committee to review the rock quantities. So moving on to Phase 2B, which is the CTE building, we have a construction budget of $70 million. Our latest estimate had us trending over budget by about $7 million. So we're currently in the redesign of the gymnasium space in particular. We noted that that was a space that grew in scope, so we targeted that as the area to reduce scope. So we're really taking that gym from roughly 30,000 square feet down to 12,000 square feet. And we're anticipated to submit to SED in September. So this is a couple of renderings of what the new design would look like. To give you a little perspective from a plan view, this is a footprint of the building as it existed under the original design. The orange block in the top right corner is the gym. And then, as you can see, this is an overlay of our new design, so you can get an idea of just how much square footage that we were able to reduce from this building. Phase 3, we bid this project back in October. We were over budget by about $2.1 million for a multitude of reasons. Mechanical equipment costs were rising, sheet metal costs, electrical costs with switchgear, conduit, and wire, as well as some of the piping that was associated with the chiller. So we came together with the Executive Committee, looked at some value engineering items that we could reduce scope or remove scope and put it into an alternate. So we did a few different things. We took out a temporary parking lot that is in the bus loop. We changed the HVAC system from a ceiling-hung ducked unit to floor-mounted unit ventilators, very similar to what's in the buildings currently. We eliminated the chiller. We're now using direct-expansion cooling, meaning a condensing unit. And we changed the flooring in the cafeteria to VCT as opposed to an LVT or solid vinyl tile. So it's very in line with what's already in your buildings. We moved some scope into alternates, so there's theater, rigging, lighting, and sound work that were in alternate. Duck cleaning, the operable partition, there's a sound barrier in the cafeteria. We moved into an alternate. There was a request for expanded entrance paving and change of the floor. So a lot of that work was considered what we would call scope creep, so it wasn't necessarily in the original bond, in the original scope. So just to give you an idea of what some of these things look like, this is the bus loop that was removed on the left-hand side was the original design. I'm sorry, the temporary parking in the bus loop. We were able to, under different means, provide a temporary parking behind the gym, so this was not needed. Another example here is when the change with the unit ventilators with the ducted units. You'll see on top, basically, a floor plan showing the duct work that was highlighted, and on the bottom is the new plan. You'll see most of that highlighted duct work. It's gone now. The changing in the flooring, as you can see on the top, that's the solid vinyl tile that was in the base bid previously. And below is now a vinyl composite tile, so they look very similar. There's a couple of differences in the maintenance of it, but otherwise, it's a very similar product, and it's still a very good product. So in May, because we were over budget, we did rebid the project. We are still, unfortunately, over budget by about $1 million. But this is really the same list of cost-saving measures that we did in alternates with the cost essentially outlined below. So we were able, overall, on the base bid, to save close to $600,000. And then every one of those items that were alternates, that was all removed out of the original bid. So that's a fair amount of money, about $863,000 worth of money that was removed out of the base bid. So we were actually successful in a way where we were able to save some money. And I'll get into a little later why we're not seeing the savings that we were really anticipating. This is just a synopsis of, by trade, what you can see, the difference of the original bid and the rebid. You can see we did have a fair amount of savings still. All of the bidders have been vetted out. So if we were to award these contracts, we do know that they are willing and able to perform the work. Phase 4A was the New Windsor Tower demolition. This is another preliminary project to make way for the addition at New Windsor. This one, we have a construction budget of $705,000. We ultimately ended up with a final contract value of $807,000. We were slightly over budget at $100, just about $100,000 over budget. A couple of reasons for that was there was a lot of material left in the building. We weren't anticipating, so that had a cost associated with the removal of that. We also had some abatement changes in the policies in which we have to do abatement. So the anticipation was to be able to take the building down as hazardous material. But now we had to do a separate contract to actually abate the building before taking it down, so that added some cost. Phase 4B is the addition. Here, we're trending right on target with this one. We did submit it to SED in April, and review is currently underway. We've received comments, so we're working through those right now. And we're anticipating SED approval in July or August of this year. Phase 5 is very similar to Phase 3, which was Heritage. We bid this back in October as well. Again, we were seeing a project that was over budget by about $2.4 million. We employed many of the same cost-savings measures. We had some parking lot subbase that we reduced. We changed the HVAC system from a vertical ducted unit ventilator to the same system, a floor-mounted unit ventilator with direct-expansion cooling. We had a fin tube radiation replacement. We changed manufacturers for air handling units. We changed specialty ceiling that had colors, different colors and shapes, to a more standard product. And then, of course, the flooring changes. We also incorporated alternate bids with the theater package, the rigging, lighting, and audio, and then the entrance canopy. Just to give you an idea of what some of those changes look like, we reduced the subbase from 16 inches to 12 inches throughout the entire bus loop and parking lot. Same type of image you saw for Heritage. This is the highlighted duct work on the left that went away as part of the new HVAC design. The ceiling system on the top, you can see there's some trapezoidal triangle shapes, different colors. We put it to a more standard ceiling that you would be used to seeing throughout the district. And then, of course, flooring. Again, it's the same luxury vinyl tile versus a vinyl composite tile. They look very similar. Again, they have just some slightly different maintenance requirements. So where we landed with a rebid, which was on June 7th, we were able to rebid the project. We did realize some savings, but again, we're still somewhat over budget, $1.4 million. In the base bid, we were able to save $241,000. And then with the alternates, it was just shy of another $500,000 that was removed from the base bid. And then, again, this is where it broke out in terms of contract value, from the original bid to the rebid, and what the difference is. In Vale's Gate in particular, we saw some contracts actually increase as opposed to decreasing. A few examples of why we may be seeing this and why we're still over budget is we're seeing inflation costs that are at unprecedented levels. I think we've all been to the gas pump lately. Before I came here, I paid $5.09 for gas, which is just insane. But the contractors are feeling that as well. So we have the fuel costs that are rising. We have suppliers that cannot guarantee our contractors' pricing for more than a couple of weeks at a time. That's putting the contractors in a precarious situation where they now have to see the future, so to speak, and provide numbers that they're really not sure of. And then, in the end, when they order the material, they will have to pay the price of whatever the material is at the time of the order, which could be several months in advance. We also are seeing labor rates continuing to rise. So just a couple of specific examples of what we were seeing when we were qualifying the contractors after the bid. We have asphalt that is at a 50% increase between October to June. We have conduit and wire. The electrical components are a huge part of this project at a 20% increase. Installation is at 30%. The exact same rooftop units are now 69% more money in June than they were just six months ago. And then, of course, like I said, labor has increased to the tune of about 3.5%. So where do we go from here? We're in a position where we continue to be over budget. It would be our position that costs are going to continue to rise, waiting. We've already seen, we bid in October. We're bidding again in June, and we're not really realizing the savings that we thought we would. So moving forward in any of the other projects, we need to really evaluate the scopes of work, and we may have to make some decisions about cutting scope. I want to remind everyone, this project was budgeted back in 2018, 2019. This was before anyone knew what our economy was going to be doing today. Our dollar just does not go as far anymore, so we just need to be cognizant of that and careful moving forward. There are other means that we can supplement funding as well between grants and rebates, so we're going to have to just start looking into those as well and see if we can bridge some of those gaps that way. So I'm going to open it up to questions on anything that I may have spoken about.
Board members, questions? Go ahead, Mr. Stridiron.
If we can go back to the layout for the CTE property, it's on one of the first slides. The area that was the largest rock concentration on the lower right side, that rectangular area, what is that proposed to be?
That will be a parking lot.
So we spent roughly, did we spend $300,000 on the rock removal?
On the entire site, not just that area.
No, the additional, the change order. So the change order, $300,000 for rock removal in that area?
Not in that particular area. It was throughout the entire site.
So that $300,000 doesn't include that area at all?
So any of the areas that you see that are shaded in that darker crosshatch, I don't know if it's a little hard to see here, but those were part of the original bid. That was part of the base bid, so that was encountered or captured within the bid price, not the change order price.
So the rectangular red boxes are the additional items?
That is correct.
Why would you put a parking lot in a large area of rock removal? Couldn't you just slide that over to the north?
So there is a larger area filled to the north. I mean, we can do many different things, and we're choosing the path that we think is the best with the information that we had. I guess we don't, we didn't realize how deep that rock may have been.
I would think that- I would think that that area is extremely rocky. You can see the rocks from basically the entire site before the trees were removed. That would have been one of those areas that should have been tested probably better as far as drilling, for testing, boring testing. Just in a general sense, I see all the overage on the budget. I can understand the cost of increase, but on the CTE building itself, that gymnasium, what's the budget just for the gymnasium? I asked that question about a month ago. What's the budget just for the gymnasium? Because that $7 million was really just for the gymnasium over budget.
Right, so the budget for the gymnasium was about 5.5 to 6 million dollars, just to, just for the gymnasium.
But the over-budget at the last presentation was $7 million over budget for the gymnasium?
Not specific to the gymnasium, but we saw that was a scope that grew the most in terms of what was voted on by voters versus what the design was currently.
Who, how did you get from what the voters approved for the gymnasium to the big gymnasium? How did that happen?
So, we had several meetings. We were basically having them weekly. These meetings compromise comprised of Mr. Ramjog, Mr. Padilla. I think Mr. Levinstein was part of those as well. So we would always have these regular meetings where we would discuss scope. And we were requested by the former superintendent to have a larger gym space.
So, the former superintendent changed the scope of what the public voted on and what the board was shown. So now we have to pay the architect $314,000 to redesign it, to bring it back to what the voters had. Why can't we, as a board, hold the former superintendent accountable for that? To go against what the public voted on, change the scope, and cost the district $314,000? Nobody knew about this. Nobody knew what was happening. Nobody knew that these meetings were happening. The board didn't know. So, again, we're at the situation where, yes, we need that extra $314,000. We need that extra few million dollars for the other buildings. We could use that, we could use that scope for the other buildings. That would have been, you said $5 million to re, less to redesign the gym? How much is the 12,000 square foot gym going to cost in relation to the 30,000 square foot gym?
So, right now, we're looking at about $6 million for the new, new design.
So it went from seven to six?
No, so the, all the overages didn't come from the gym itself, but that gym was, do you have a, 12.5 million for just that gym? We were trying to shoot for five to six million dollars, that's really the budget for the gym.
So now it's, it was $7 million higher than it is now?
Yes.
That, all that money could have been used for the other three buildings? Because someone had this grand scheme in their mind of making this palace to put their face on it. This is ridiculous. This is why we need public meetings. This is why we need transparency, and we didn't have that. When is the next meeting for the capital bond? When is that going to happen?
Mr. Ramjog, can you help us with that?
Yes, so I just wanted to touch, to clarify a few things. So for the past two years, as part of the second meeting, board meeting of each month, there were presentations to the board to update all of the progress with CTE as well as the swimming pool and the other, and the development of the projects. The core question when it came to the expansion really was, was the project within budget? And up to and including very recently, the project had been in budget. You asked me specifically, Mr. Stridion, on a number of times, how much is this going to cost us? And the number was 70 million. And you asked me, were we in budget? And the answer is yes. As the inflationary factor continued, came into the picture, it's at that point, based on calculated budgeting, that it grew to the 77 million mark. And I think I shared that with you at one of the board meetings, that our CTE had grown and that we were in a process of reducing value engineering. The core piece, the discretionary piece, in lieu of avoiding having to compromise any of the vocational education spaces in the primary building, really the only place that was, that had that discretionary value engineering capacity was the exhibition space or the gymnasium. So while it did expand, it was within budget. And this information was shared with the board on a very consistent basis to bring everyone up to speed on where we were. So I just needed to clarify that aspect. And in deciding, the committee, in deciding where that reduction should come from, there were a couple of other minor scopes, but the lion's share of that reduction came within, from that gymnasium. So that's the reason why it's back to where it is now.
Mr. Ramjog, when is the next meeting? That's my question.
Our next, it's, well, we have OECD meeting on Monday, and then we have our next executive committee meeting on the 27th of June.
Does that answer one of your questions?
Well, it answered the questions, but they're going to be public, right? That's what was agreed upon at the last board meeting that we discussed this.
Yeah, Mr. Ramjog and Ms. Roaring, we need to coordinate that to make them continue with the meetings, but open them up to the public.
Very well, absolutely.
Now, before you ask your next question, Mr. Levinstein had his hand up, Mr. Howard had his hand up, and then I'll get back to you. Go ahead.
So, just checking, on the Phase 2A where there's that change order that's coming before us tonight, even with that change order, it's marked that it's 500,000 under budget for Phase 2A site clearing. I just wanted to be clear about that.
Correct, 446,000, including the cost of the change order.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ramjog, for clearing that up. But, so, these meetings were the discussion of the gymnasium. Were these meetings held secretly? Were these secret meetings? Because Mr. Stridion was implying, I mean, the implications, Dr. Padilla is behind us. And to keep going there, it's kind of ridiculous. I mean, based on what he said, it's like these were secret meetings where he made the decision to go over budget by $7 million, and then you come up with clarifications. I'm just saying, let's put that behind us.
No, I will say from my perspective...
Were they secret meetings?
Well, these were the executive committee meetings. This is the structure that was established to inform the capital project development throughout the entire...
And who was included in those meetings?
Myself, Dr. Padilla, at times, Ms. Mano joined in into the meetings, the architect, the NTA representative, the, these were all of the stakeholders within the district. So, it was a very diverse group.
Thank you for that clarification, because...
We needed the input from all of those different sources in order to accurately inform the specifics of what we were planning on doing.
So part of the reason for the increase is, you said, inflation, it was an inflationary cost?
It's a runaway train, yeah.
So it wasn't the decision to go from a five to a, it wasn't the decision to go to a grandiose gym?
No, the question was asked at every presentation, and we were monitoring it, that we stayed within that 70 million threshold.
Thank you.
And it started to increase excessively when, of course, the inflation came in. I will say also that, as candidly as I can, and Mr. Levinstein was also very adamant about this, is that we remained within the budget, and Dr. Padilla also upheld that. Starting with the pool, there were questions and decisions that had to be made, and it was always about remaining within budget. So I do have to say that in fairness to him.
So, I wanted to say that I only joined this committee recently, and my question has been, what did the voters vote on, and how much has it changed from then? And especially that gym had changed significantly.
But based on what Mr. Ramjog is saying, it wasn't the decision of the gym, it was a lot of other costs involved, inflationary costs, and it wasn't meetings that were held secretly, and it wasn't a decision to go from the, what the voters wanted to some grandiose project.
But, Mr. Howard, I'm not sure that what the, what the voters voted on...
Right.
...in that gym was a 30,000-foot gym. I thought it was a smaller gym that was voted on by the public. And therefore, to go to a larger gym, that decision was made somewhere, but now we've downscaled it to be more in line with what the voters voted on.
So one person made that decision?
I'm not sure that one person made that decision, but the decision was made. I don't, I can't answer that question.
Oh, that's what I'm trying to get to. Did one person make that decision? And I'm not trying to defend anyone, I'm just saying, that's behind us.
Mr. Stridion, are you, do you have another question?
It's not behind us because we're dealing with millions of dollars and over budget. So, there's nothing behind us. It's all ahead of us at this point. So, at this point, we know that the voters voted on a certain-sized building...
Correct.
...that was $7 million budget.
Correct.
That's what we know. From the time the voters approved the capital bond to sometime last year, maybe, or maybe even a year before that, the gym went from a $5 million budget roughly to a $12 million budget. So, and those meetings were not, we didn't know. No one here knew that that gym went from 12,000 square feet to 30,000 square feet. Nobody. Nobody in the public knew about it. We asked, as a board, that we be kept abreast of any changes to the scope of the project. That was something that was, happened back in 2007, 2008, that we didn't want to happen again. And we made it adamantly clear, any major changes to the scope, we need to know. That never happened. So, I'm not saying secret meetings, but there's no transparency. So, if someone would have said two years ago, we're going to go from a 12,000-square-foot gym to a 30,000-square-foot gym, I don't think anybody in this board would have been like, hell yeah, let's do that. No. This is supposed to focus on educational spaces.
Correct.
So, I think that, how did it happen? We don't know, because the meetings weren't public. The meetings weren't public, we don't know.
I'm asking, Mr. Stridion?
Because he was there. So how did it happen?
So, initially, when we talk about a gymnasium, while it was planned to be, to have a gymnasium, to have phys ed capabilities, some of the other reasons and rationale and usage of the space was for, for example, ROTC, to use that space for their marching that they do now in interface hallways. And then it was, it was always planned to be a community center in the context of having...
Mr. Ramjog, Mr. Ramjog, I think we keep using the term physical education space. I believe when I started and I was attending the meetings, it was more of an event center slash physical education space that was being designed, where it could host statewide tournaments, where we could actually lease that space out. This is the way it was described to me when I took over.
That's correct, Mr. Ford.
That we would lease the space out to other events that wanted to use it. I believe that's what the prototype was, that you were being, that you guys were developing and designing?
Correct, I was getting to that, but yes, you're correct.
Okay, let's get to that.
Yeah. So, as Mr. Ford just said, it had to, there was a design, there was a design potential, a vision, that it would be used as event space, used as a community space for sporting events, and it could be leased out. But you're correct, it did expand in terms of the number of seating. And the question that determined what that threshold of expansion was, was whether we could build it within the budget. So that's how it got to, got to the level of expansion. Having said that, when we monitored the budget, in order to stay below that 70 million threshold, that became the area that it got, that got reduced. It's really the only space that has the discretionary capabilities.
Yes, Mr. Stridion.
Just going forward, what I don't want to see happen is that educational spaces in all the buildings be cut back to pay for the mistakes that have happened. The voters want educational spaces. So, going forward, we have to make sure everything is tight. We can't waste any money. So, do we have the protocols in place to make sure that change orders don't get, of a large size, don't get approved before the work is done?
Yes.
So, Mr. Stridion, a couple of things. Yes, we will have the meetings in public and include public in those particular meetings. The second thing, with regards to what's the, what's their overall vision that we have for the space? It's always for instructional purposes, and we started having those conversations in January, that when we think about the space that we're designing, it's for kids to learn, and that's what we're creating, an opportunity for kids to learn in the square footage that we're building. And that's, that's the lens that we're using moving forward. I'd also like Ms. Roaring to talk about her leadership and her expectations for moving forward with change orders and the expectation she's putting in place and holding all of the individuals that are participating accountable. Ms. Roaring, can you just share that?
Yes. So we've been looking at a new format and how we're going to be handling things as of July 1st. We've talked previously about having the facilities committee serve as a public forum for updates on the capital project that would occur routinely. We've also talked about the structured process for change orders and how those will be vetted and the process that those will go through. In the event that a change order cannot be precisely determined, we would seek the board's authorization and amount to, not to exceed, and track on those. We've really talked about some of the structures that we're putting in place to ensure both transparency with our community, being true to the referendum they voted on, and how we can proceed within the budgetary allowances.
Thank you very much.
Member questions? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my address, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. We're now on Board Committees, Curriculum and Instruction Committee, Mrs. Maida.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. We have five resolutions that you see on our agenda this evening. Three of those resolutions are agreements with Culinary Institute, Mohawk Valley Community College, Clarkson, and Clarkson, all of which provide more opportunities for our students. Secondly, we had directors, our directors provided us with culmination of the secondary students and their accomplishments for the school year. So many wonderful things happening with our scholars, we were excited to hear all of the accomplishments. Mr. Itree also shared with the fact that over 100 of his students are, will be employed for the summer. So thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to exceptional learners, Ms. Burton, or Mr. Stridion is going to take over for that one.
Thank you, Madam President. So on June 8th, the Exceptional Learners Committee met. We had a very detailed presentation from the Occupational Therapy and all the work that they do for all of our students and with our families. We had the Restorative Justice Update, Diversion Program Planning, Community Schools Initiative Update, Transition Fair Update, Resolution to Approve the Tuition Waiver for Students, and the Monthly CPSC/CSI. Thank you.
Mr. Stridion, why don't you continue and do the library, we'll jump out of water.
Sure. The library committee met on June 9th. We had the director's report, and we had overall discussion about the construction update, and we had upcoming Juneteenth programming, and we had a lot of programs that are coming up this month and getting ready for the summer programs. We also had the resolution on tonight's agenda for the Newburg Free Library Budget Transfer.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Howard, Policy Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Policy Committee met on June 9th, and we had discussions around a few of the policies that are on the agenda for this evening, that being Policy 5502, grading for grades six through 12. We also had a conversation that's being brought on this evening for a first reading... We also had a conversation that's being brought on to this evening for first reading, for the use of electronic devices. Uh, we had discussions with Resolution to Approve the Removal Policy from Policy 59, 5696, which was in reference to grades nine through 12 electronic devices. Also, we had a conversation and discussion around Resolution to Adopt a Policy on First Reading this evening, 6410, in regards to authorized signatures. And another Resolution, 6800, in reference to the payroll procedures. And then we had some discussions around policy regulation changes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. We're going to move on to Audit and Finance Committee, Mr. Levenstein.
Thank you, Madam President. The Audit and Finance met at 5:00 PM tonight. We discussed the 15 resolutions on tonight's finance agenda. We also discussed the district's instructional technology plan with Mr. Place. And then we had co, executive session, conversations with the district's internal and external auditors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levenstein. We're going to move on to my section and I have a number of items as a consent. We have items 5.1 through 5.7 as a consent agenda. Would any member like to separate out any items? Yes, Mr. Levenstein?
5.4, please.
Any others to separate out? I'd like to entertain a motion on 5.1 through 5.7 minus 5.4.
Some more.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manio?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
We're going to move to item 5.4. That's a Resolution to Adopt Policy on the First Read and that's the use of electronic devices. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Some more.
Questions or discussion? Yes, Mr. Levenstein?
Thank you, Madam President. So I, I agree with the objectives and intentions of this policy and I would hope it could be achieved, but I do not see this policy being able to be enforced practically, efficiently, fairly, and with fidelity. So, so I'm going to vote no and it's just for the enforcement part of the policy. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Stridiron.
So this, changes to this policy, were anybody, as far as teachers and administrators brought in to give their input? Or was there a poll on, on the changes to the policy?
Ms. Peterson?
So this policy was a part of our, um, shared decision-making policy review that we have annually, um, where we take stakeholders from each unit and we discuss a policy that's causing concern. This was a lively discussion. This took over two to three months to bring to the Policy Committee because of the many implications that it had across our district. We also then separately met with administration around the enforcement because there were concerns that it can be done with fidelity. We've had input, I know that many of you spoke to parents that, about our cell phone part of the policy. They came to the board to express their concerns. I also contacted them, um, to get their feedback. I also met with students at South Middle about our cell phone policy. So this is something that has been almost three and a half to four months in the making, trying to get a policy. What we found is that it's, it's a very complicated one and some of it needs to be tied into our code of conduct so that the enforcement of the policy can be done with fidelity and with guidelines and implementation in the fall.
Yes, sir. And then I'll go to Mr. Howard.
So on, on the third offense where the, the phone is confiscated, the parent gets to take that, or the student gets to take that, that home that day, but that can't bring it back? Is that correct?
Correct.
So any other offense after that is what?
Subject to the code of conduct. So there has to be some type of enforcement around the breaking of the policy. What we found with the current policy was the confiscation on both sides, from the community angle and from the administrative and teacher angle about confiscating a device, some which are over $1,500. So it was a big part of the, the, um, conversation when we were talking about the confiscation of devices. We know sometimes that, um, students make decisions that are not ideal and we need to make sure that we have, um, you know, parents involved with the conversation around the enforcement of the electronic device in school.
So would they be suspended for bringing this phone to school?
They're going to be subjected to the code of conduct. So we're going to, um, point our administrators to progressive discipline when it comes to egregious acts with the cell phone. So if we, we see a student conducting a behavior, they're going to be subject to the code of conduct.
Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Ms. Peterson, can you talk to the conversation that we had in regards to possibly having assemblies at the beginning of the year to really model what we feel is right, what we feel, what will happen, what can happen, what will not be allowed? And so they can see the behavior modeled instead of just reading it and understanding the importance that every building have assemblies where they must, we even had conversations around, Ms., Madam President, when you talked about, they used to do it in social studies class and they used to have to sign off on the fact that they did see this, have attended the assembly so nobody can play ignorance to what they didn't know, they don't know, or they haven't heard. Can you speak to that, please?
So as a part of the regulation to the policy, which will be coming to the board, it, it was about the implementation of this policy in terms of administration and beginning of the year expectation. Currently in our policy, there is an expectation that, um, policy must be reviewed in the beginning of the year. We're going to make an addition to that, that it is reviewed in smaller sessions, um, with students so they understand the expectation around cell phone usage and that will be in the regulation forthcoming.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manio?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
No.
Passes.
Thank you. Um, 5.8, uh, policy regulations changes was just for your information. So that concludes my items. I'm going to move on to the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction Secondary, Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Madam President. Our division presents to you Agenda Items 6.1 through 6.5 for the board members' consideration and consent.
Would any member like to separate out any of these items? I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Ms. Manio?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent of Exceptional Learners, Mr. Bayer.
Thank you, Madam President. The Exceptional Learner Division has one item for the board's consideration, recommendations from the CSE and CPSE committees.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manio?
Yes.
Thank you, that concludes my items.
Thank you, Mr. Bayer. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Ms. Roaring.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, the Division of Finance brings forward Items 8.1 to 8.15 for routine consent.
Would any member like to separate out any of these items? Yes, sir?
8.13, 8.14.
8.13 and 14? Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion on Items 8.1 through 8.15 minus 8.13 and 8.14. Questions or discussion on that group of items? Roll call, sir?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manio?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Let's move on to Item 8.13. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manio?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Let's move on to Item 8.14. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Excuse me? Thank you, sir. Questions or discussion? Yes, Mr. Stridiron.
So this item is for $314,000 to redesign the, the gymnasium or the entire CTE building?
Ms. Roaring?
Oh, Mr. Ramjug.
It's, it's a not to exceed, uh, the architect in keeping with our, uh, fiscal prudency, agreed to do the redesign for the gymnasium, uh, at cost not to exceed, um, the 314K. So, um, they're doing it on a T and M basis.
That's time and materials.
Time and material, I'm sorry. Time and material basis.
So how much was the design of the CTE building the first time?
Uh, the, the entire CTE, I, I don't have that number in front of me, but I can-
Just roughly. I mean, is it a million dollars?
Oh, it was about 3 million.
3 million for the whole building?
Maybe a little bit more.
Okay. So about 10% to redesign a 12,000-square-foot space?
Yeah, I think, it was the least percentage out of all the buildings, but because it's a, a higher, a higher cost.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Howard? Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manio?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my items.
Thank you, Ms. Roaring. We're going to move on to our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Mr. Macklemore.
Thank you, Madam President. On the Human Resources Agenda, I have Items 9.1 through 9.13 for your consideration on tonight.
Would any member like to separate out any of these items? Yes, sir?
I, I would like to separate out 9.5, number 51, and the reason is because that's for my wife and I want to abstain on voting for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so anybody else? Yes, sir?
9.19, please.
Say that again, please, Mrs.?
919?
919. Okay. Yes? Yes, Mr. Macklemore?
Madam President, I'm sorry, I missed some items.
So you're, we're going from 9.1 to 9.19?
Yes, yes, Madam President.
Okay. So right now, we're, we're still in good standing here, Mr. Macklemore, so we're taking out two items. And, um, I'd like to entertain a motion on all but 9.5, number 51, and 9.19. Questions or discussion on those items? Yes, sir?
After all the information provided, I will have faith in the decisions made and I hope everything works out for the best.
Thank you. Okay, good. Okay. So any other questions or comments? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manio?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
So we're going to go back to 9.5, number 51. So I guess I have to do the whole, no, do I have to do the whole thing? No. So I just, okay. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manio?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Thank you. We're going to move on to Item 9.19. I'd like to entertain a motion, please. Questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Ms. Manio?
Yes.
Mr. Stridiron?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Madam President, may I, I'd like to request permission to add an item?
Would you, would you please read that item, Mr. Macklemore?
Yes. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation from, uh, Ms. Jeanette Leggerfo, Principal of Guinea Avenue Memorial School, for the purpose of retirement effective October 31st, 2022.
I'd like to entertain a motion to add this to the agenda, please. Questions or discussion on adding? Roll call to add, please.
Mr. Stridiron?